Good evening and welcome to December eighth Board of Education meeting. We'll do roll call. I think we're all seven here tonight, so very good. If you want to stand and do the pledges, legions with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? If so, do I have a motion and second to approve the agenda?
Second.
Been moved. Second, we approve the agenda as presented. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Dr. Cobb's.
Yeah, the only thing I want to bring to light are donations. Mustang Seed here in town donated two hundred and fifty dollars to the FFA group at OHS. DECA also donated a little over a thousand, a thousand and fifty dollars for OHS, the SAFE program. And the craft show, which takes, took place a couple of weeks ago at OMS, donated fifty dollars to our A-team. So that is a huge benefit to our groups.
Very good. Do I hear any discussion or do I hear a motion and a second for consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved. Second, we approve the consent agenda. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. No comments from the public? I see nobody wanting to, so we'll move on to reports and presentation. I hear we have Eugene Field students in the house. Come on down.
Come on down.
Good evening, Dr. Cobb's, Board of Education. Thank you for having us this evening to be able to present some great students of our OLC program. Ms. Allen's classroom has graciously taken over some of our community service efforts during this school year. And so I'm going to have Ms. Allen and the students talk to you about a little of those volunteer efforts.
Hello. First of all, thank you guys so much for letting us come and share with you what is, it's really become one of the highlights of our week, wouldn't you say?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there was an opening this year for one of the routes for Meals on Wheels in Franklin County. And so Lisa Redding, social worker at the high school, talked to us about possibly OLC getting involved. I thought it was a wonderful opportunity for these students to really learn about community service and being a compassionate citizen. So I went to have some of my crew here share their thoughts and their feelings about that. Who wants to go first?
I'll go.
Oh, gosh, there you go.
Okay.
I think Meals on Wheels is great because we impact the community so much with such a small action, like delivering meals to people. It's not funny. Like delivering meals to people with a kind greeting. Something as small as that can make someone's day completely. I think it's also not only impacted our community, but also impacted like us as classmates. I think it sharpened our bonds and our social interactions together. Some of the people standing here, I wouldn't stand twenty feet within a couple, maybe like two, three months ago. So it's definitely a positive thing for our class. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, come on. We don't have much time, guys.
All right. Um, I love the opportunity to do Meals on Wheels. I think that it teaches some of us patience. I think a lot of us needs the patience. But I think it teaches, I think it teaches us a lot about patience. I really love the idea of it. I think that it brightens a lot of people's days. I'm not sure if too many of them have grandkids or, you know, family members that come and visit them. But I love the idea that we make them smile. And I know some people just need to smile, honestly. But yeah, I really just love the opportunity of it. I love everybody behind me. I treat them all like family, even if they aren't. And I think that I trust these people with, you know, just helping me have a great day and, you know, just going and looking at everybody, seeing how they smile and just knowing that, you know, we made their day. It's great. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Good job.
Ladies, go.
Hello. I love doing Meals on Wheels because I get to hang out with the class outside of school. And like Grayden and Trip said, it really just brings us all together, I feel like. And I love doing Meals on Wheels because I get to see all the people and talk to them, have conversations with them. They're really sweet. I love them all. But yeah, that's why I like doing Meals on Wheels.
We also make them like cards.
Oh, yeah, little notes.
The girls in the class, if we have time after our assignments before ten thirty, before we leave, we make them notes. And that's like our addition to the meals.
Try to make their day a little bit better.
And we like draw on them and make them cutesy.
Cutesy, yeah.
All right.
Well, before we go, again, I just want to say thank you, but Grayden Griffin, of course, Macy Herzog, Jaded Oaks, Trip Nichols, and Tatum Gray lead the way. And so the volunteer hours, the Meals on Wheels and the harvesters that we're able to do, that contributes because I can start to have this group start to talk to our students that are ninth and tenth graders when they do come to our program. Because that is, it's a great asset because of the post-secondary assets that we have to start obtaining for our ninth and tenth graders. And so being able to have a group that can present to those students, tell them what it's about, then they can kind of pass that torch and just keep us going, going strong with that activity. So thank you, Ms. Allen, for doing that. Thank you guys for being here tonight.
I have a comment. I hope you know that you all make a difference because I had one of your routes last summer and they really missed you. They would rather see you than me. But they really, they really, the people that I delivered to really missed you guys. So I hope you know that you are making a difference.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, I just want to say this. OLC has been around for a while and it's kind of gone through a number of different iterations. I just want to tell you how proud I am of what you guys have turned OLC into. You guys are model citizens. What you are doing for our community is far more impactful than you may ever know. And so I appreciate you a ton and I appreciate you for making OLC great. It is a great place and a great opportunity for many of our students to find their way. So thank you all for making it great and thank you for taking care of one another. That may be the most important piece here, take care of one another. So I appreciate all that you do and Joe and Mrs. Allen. Thank you, guys. OLC is an amazing place for our kids. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb.
Job well done. Thank you.
I'm not sure anything can follow that tonight.
Yep. Well, very good. Thank you for that. I don't see Reach for the Stars. We're moving on.
Reach for the Stars will rotate down when Lee gets here. We'll come back to Reach for the Stars.
All right. We'll let her shake a few more hands and kiss a few babies and... Mrs. Bybee, come on down. Winter assessments. How about that?
Were they not awesome?
They were.
That just made my night, seriously. Well, with interim assessments. Really, interim assessments are for us like a formative assessment. So your state assessment is a summative assessment where we want to look to see how, how, what does our learning look like and how did our kids achieve? What our interim assessments do is they give us that, number one, practice. Number two, there's, kind of can predict how our kids are going to do on the state assessment. Gives the kids the opportunity to see the types of questions that they're going to see on the state assessment. But what I wanted to share with you tonight, first of all, is I'm not going to go through each of the slides because there's a lot of things on the next few slides because that would take way too long. But I'll just kind of do a quick overview. But look at our ELA scores. This was awesome. Tenth grade still has a lot of work to do and we're looking at that right now with our curriculum review. But look at how many of our questions that this kid's answered. So how, how we look at the interim assessment is there's a number of questions and we look to see how many were at or above state average for that question. And we had a significant number of our, of our kids' grade levels that were, had a large percent above the state average. So very, that's, that's a real positive thing. Doesn't mean that that's where our assessments are going to end up, but that sure gives us a good feel for how our ELA instruction is continually improving. The, the questions that students scored below the state average, there were still a few of those that were within three percent. So we're right there, real close. But the grade levels that aren't as strong, then we just look at, okay, let's look at those questions that they missed. What, where do we teach that? Is that something that we haven't taught yet or haven't focused a whole lot of time on? Math's different, a little different when you look at this because, so it looks like, wow, we're really not doing well at all in math. But what, the way the interims are, is there's a variety of questions. We may not have covered those standards. And since math is such a progressive type of content where ELA is a little more comprehensive, we can hit a lot of standards at one time, but math is really, works on a progression. So if we haven't gotten to a certain standard, kids truly may not completely understand how to do certain skills. So what I wanted to look at then was how many of those, those questions were standards that our teachers covered before the interim assessment? So that's where the results of those covered column, it tells you how many of those questions were covered and then how many of those questions that we covered were above the state or close to the state. So we're really pretty close. So if you look at the, like, eighth grade getting, 10th grade, we didn't have that. I didn't get from the teachers which one, that's why that isn't filled in, which ones they've covered. But the other grades, when you look at thirteen of the fourteen that eighth grade covered, our kids did above the state. So that was great. The ones that may not be as strong, then what we look at is what are those questions that they missed? So on the next three slides, essentially what this is, is what I did is put this together to see, those are the areas within ELA, language and reading, craft and structure, reading information, key ideas and details, so forth. That, that's the, the topic of each one of the quest, of the questions that are on the interim assessment. But what I can tell from this, for me, for us as curriculum or as instruction goes, is I can look to see, okay, are there some similarities? So when I look at the ELA, I looked at, okay, a lot of the same thing under language and, and reading is vocabulary meaning of words. So that can spark conversations within our PLCs about how are we teaching vocabulary within our instruction that's happening in our ELA classrooms? When we look at the craft and structure, a lot of them were centered around text structure or word meaning in context and how that impacts tone of a text. So if we can see some similarities, then we can also look vertically to see what are the, how, how are we teaching these skills that our kids might be missing? And is it something that is not hit very strong in certain areas? Or so do we need to do some work aligning better, which is a great thing for us to do during our curriculum review too, some of these skills? So I just, that, the reason I gave you this is just to show, this is another way that we can use interim assessments. Not just how did the kids specifically score, but what are the skills that we are really strong in and what are the skills that we need to focus on and are there commonalities across the grade levels? So that's what the next three slides are. Any questions that, as you looked through these, that may have, you may have thought about?
I think it's interesting, if you take the results of covered and the results of above state average, there's a similarity. Very, almost scary close. So that means if we've covered it, they answer the question correctly.
Right.
And so it does tell me that our, our teaching practices are doing really, really well.
Right.
Okay, because they're retaining what's being learned. It's, it's a little bit concerning that on some of these, we haven't covered that. Is that just progression?
Yeah, here's the, here's the real ridiculousness of how KSDE does interim assessments. And we've had this conversation with them about if they created a scope and sequence that was appropriate for our state that we, we could work through, then they could provide progressive interim assessments. They don't do that. Essentially, they just take all of the standards, they pull a bunch of questions out of a hat. And so there are going to be things on the fall interim that, that show up not until the spring. So a lot of it depends on how schools want to cover it. If you cover geometry at the elementary early on, typically see some of those, typically see some of those questions on the interim assessments and we score really high on those. But the districts that haven't covered geometry yet, they tend to score pretty low. So depending on where it falls, that's just kind of the ridiculousness of how they do the interim assessments. But I agree, Harold. If they, we have had this conversation. If they would create a, a basic scope and sequence, these standards should be covered at these point in times during the year and let us assess them, then we would be much better.
I think you ought to send them this data and say the data proves that, you know, if we cover it, we test, okay?
Yeah. We, we had, at our curriculum leaders meeting, we had this conversation. And the reason they won't do that, because we essentially said, really what you need to do is you need to create a statewide scope and sequence for math. And the reason they won't do that is because we're a local control state, so therefore we get to choose locally what our scope and sequence is, what our resources are. We still have to cover all the standards, but they're very leery about saying, this is how you should do it. And yet, would, would we be better off if they did? It was, it was definitely a topic of conversation actually last year. And then we've also had that a little bit this year too.
Will they use these for anything?
The interims?
Yeah.
Not really.
So it's...
It's really used, it's really a formative assessment for us. And for kids to be able to have the ability to have practice to see what those state assessment questions look like.
Why not make it as simple as what we've covered?
Pardon me?
That's a good question.
Okay. Well, we tried to do that actually once upon a time, a couple of years ago, because they have mini tests. So we tried to do that to take, take from the standards that we've covered, to create a mini test, which they call instructional test. But they don't have enough problems or enough standards created in those mini tests for us to actually do that. But we did try that. That was truly a good thought. Just, they just didn't have enough of those questions made, so, yeah. But I do feel like we're in a great place and I do feel like we continue, we do learn things from the interim assessments. That's why, because you might question, well, why do we even still continue to give those? I think it's important for our kids to be able to see questions that are similar to what we get on the things from the interim assessments. That's why, because you might question, well, why do we even still continue to give those? I think it's important for our kids to be able to see questions that are similar to what we get on the state assessments. It's important for our teachers to understand what those questions look like within that standard so that they know how to be able to, what are my kids doing well in, what are they, they struggling with? Some of the kids, you know, if they, if there was a question that they all did super great in, but we haven't even covered it yet, well, that also gives them information, hey, my kids probably get this, we don't have to spend as much time on this when we get to this content because they actually did really well.
So, it's a good measure.
So, it is a good measure. Yeah.
How much of the last time does it take, do the interim assessments take?
They're quick, 45 minutes. It's a one day.
How many days a year?
Twice. It used to be three times, they've now done it twice. So, again, in theory, you'd think, oh, okay, so then the second interim, we're going to hit every standard, well, no, because it's in January. So, there's still a lot of learning that's going to happen after January. But, yeah, they've cut it down to two.
Why can't they just figure out what are times to do the testing to where we've covered all of the state? I just don't think that there's a...
I know that's something we can't answer.
There's a way that you can assess effectively that it doesn't have some loophole in it. So, I think, I think they've worked to, similar to, to what KISA is now with the school accreditation model, I think they've worked to minimize the volume of inaccuracies maybe that go along with it. But it's just, there's so many differing constructs that it makes it really, really difficult to put together a test that's going to meet everybody's needs.
But what it does bring for us, like I said, is it helps our kids to be able to see the types of questions because that we didn't used to do. Remember way back a long time ago when we didn't really care about what our state assessments were because they were in the mix of redoing a long time ago? This was a long time ago, like when I first started with Ottawa. At that point, interims, we didn't even need to give interims because we didn't put a lot of stock into the state assessment. Now, we put a lot of stock into the state assessment. So, we need to give our kids as much footing as possible to be able to know the types of questions that they're going to see and that we can, those instructional mini tests, we can use those to be, like, if there were questions that they didn't do well in the interim, then a teacher can go and pull a instructional mini test and use it instructionally. So, not give it to the kid to, as a test, but say, hey, if you saw this problem, how would we work through this? And so, we can, we can be able to help that way, too, to cover some of those questions that they maybe didn't do so well on.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're back.
Okay. Staffing updates.
Yeah, we won't spend a whole lot of time on this. You guys saw in the update where we're at in terms of positions that will remain unfilled and ultimately addressed via attrition. That equated to around, you know, $350,000, give or take, depending on how we might address some of the needs that are associated with it. But there are still two positions at Garfield that we need to address as we, as we continue to reduce sections there at both the second and third grade level. We will do our best to make sure that we do that via attrition as well, but I do think that it's important for us to recognize that we're awfully close to January already in the beginning of the second semester. So, there may be an opportunity in which we have to consider forced transfers and those types of things and we'll work through that as it comes. Do I believe that all three of our elementary schools will not have a, a single person of turnover at some point in time? No. Last year, when, when we saw it at Lincoln, was the first time that we'd seen it in my eight years here. So, I, I still believe that there will be some level of turnover that will result in us being able to do this without major shift. But ultimately, that, that construct would get us to around half a million dollars, slightly less than a half a million dollars in savings to our budget. Just so you all know, in terms of what we need to do from a, from a standpoint of salary negotiations, step and column typically equates to about $250,000 and then you add however many hundreds of thousands of dollars, depending on how, what percent you put on to, to the base beyond that. So, it essentially takes care of where we would, might be from the standpoint of reduction in enrollment. There will also be some level of CPI that we're going to have to, so we know we're going to see some increase in base state aid. It won't be as dramatic because we have a reduction in enrollment, but there will be some, some allowance of new dollars. It'll be the last time that there are allowance of new dollars. So, what we're hopeful is in January, I can give you a report on where we fall in terms of what we look like with staffing, what we look like in terms of negotiations of salaries as well as where we would look like, what is the, the providence of CPI at this point? They give us updates sporadically throughout the year, depending on where inflation is at. So, as much as we all didn't like high inflations, it did result in, in more budget-friendly options for schools as that inflation has gone down, the amount of new money coming into schools also goes down. So, it's a give and take there.
I don't remember what CPI is.
So, that's your, that's your, is your inflation for, I just lost the word.
Consumer Price Index.
Yeah, it's your Consumer Price Index, but it's basically allowance for inflation.
Yeah.
Right? So, as cost of things goes up, deal with that.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions on staffing? Very good. Thank you. 5.05, board reports. Anybody have anything to report? All right. We're moving on. We are making record time. All right. Number six, bus stop change.
You guys have seen the request from Randy. Currently, our, our kids are picked up on King Street and ultimately have to walk up and down the street. This change of the bus stop would allow them to go into Forest Park. It would keep our kids in a, kind of off the street for a pickup and we can, certainly more efficient for us and I think safer for our kids. But we had approved the bus stops earlier in the year, so before we made a change, wanted to make sure that the, that the board was aware that we'd be making a change. Doesn't really change where we, where we, the kids that were affected by the pickup, just the actual position of where we pick them up in a safer environment for our kids. Keeps them from having to walk across several roads and railroad tracks and so on and so forth, so.
Makes sense.
I move we approve the bus stop change as presented.
It moves seconded, that we approve the change. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Bids for OMS sound system. Can you hear me now?
I'm sure Ryan has talked about it a bit. I don't know if you've been to the middle school to see the state of the stereo system, but what they call the head end, without spending thousands of dollars, having somebody come and check it out. We're pretty sure it's been completely failed. This is a quote that I received from KCAV for both spaces. The, the head end in the middle school ran both the commons and the gym. They were tied together, which was great for the 30 years that it's been there, but now it's, it's needs replaced. KCAV's quote is a full rip and replace. This is all brand-new equipment. There are other, other options we're out there for, reusing the speakers that were in the space that may or may not be working. Like I said, without having somebody come in and test those things to the tune of several thousand dollars, there's no way of knowing and it's kind of a gamble. And it adds about $40,000 extra if those speakers are dead and you have to buy new ones. So, our, our recommendation is to go with what KCAV is presenting here, I think altogether, it was like $62,000, something, 33 for the gym and 29 for the, for the commons.
If you've ever been to the middle school gym for any type of, of a program or, or event, the sound system is awful. It's hard to understand anything. This would make it more like the high school gymnasium, certainly be clearer and easier to understand. Same with the commons area. Right now, they're, they're using a, a mic and a, and a stand-up speaker to, to make sure that people can, can hear. But this, and the reason that we, we made the recommendation for a full rip and replace, you can, you can see the other bids that came in and some of them were, if the speakers are okay, the, the cost is less. The problem is, is that if the speakers aren't okay, the cost shot way up to a point where it made more sense to just know that we're going to put in a full replacement. They've been there for far too long anyways. This takes care of our spaces, will get us years down the road. It's, it's probably the best opportunity for us and our middle school, I think, is worth making sure that we, we have a quality sound system available for our kids.
I would say 30 years would be a money... I'd say, I'd say so.
Actually, on this type of stuff.
Yeah. It's, that's original to the building.
When can they do the work if we approve it?
That'll be a question for our rep, Bobby Cardwell, with the KCV. I don't know how soon they can get the equipment. I mean, it is, it is quite a bit of equipment to get in, but that'll be, if, if it's approved, I'll call him tomorrow, first thing, get this ball rolling. KCV, we've used a bunch, this room, despite the current issue. KCAV, KCAV is, has taken well care of us. And even, even that, they have new amps on the way to replace what has died. The commons in the high school is KCV and a good chunk of the bond, I think, the Bright Links were done with KCV. So, they've done quite a bit of work with us and we're, I would say, we're satisfied. So, I have full confidence that this will be good for us. It'll be easy to use. Talking to, talking to Bobby, it's kind of indicative of everything else we have. The PAC, even the PAC is easy for the staff to go in and use and that was kind of our, one of our big hinges on this project.
So, I was just at the middle school for the Veterans Day, essentially, so what was used then?
That is going to depend on the timeframe. It is possible that we brought over equipment for, from the PAC. We borrowed some of their stage monitors and I have a, a mixed board that we use for prom. That's a little $200 mixed board, so we kind of set it up on the stage. The other option would be Mark Paquette's system that he has set up, which is two speakers that he brought in that are his speakers and a mixed board and a microphone. So, it's kind of depends on when you were there, but it's just extra equipment that have been moved into the space for it to, for it to function.
Any other questions? Comments? Dare a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve KCAV's bid as presented.
Dare a second. It moves seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
My next to you.
Yep. Okay. 6.3, bids for firewall.
So, as part of E-Rate in our refresh cycle, I started the process to look at getting our firewall replaced. The firewall that we have right now, while it's been great for us in terms of providing internet to the building and not having any downtime, it is, it has a steep learning curve. I'm the only one in the district that knows how to operate it. If I get hit by a bus on my way home tonight, you're calling somebody to figure it out. The replacement recycle on those is six to seven years, so this is being our six and a half year on that unit. In the time that it's been in service, we've replaced hardware inside of it. It's got brand-new SSDs as of when Andy Price was here. The SSDs last about every three years. So, we're within range in the next year and a half needing to replace those again. The E-Rate will pay 80% of that, I believe, is the ultimate figure. Logicalis gave us the best quote that we think that meets our needs. This is a Cisco appliance. It's a brand-new, full-featured appliance, has next-gen capability should we need that. Everything's up to date, all the definitions. This is going to be, this is going to keep us a lot safer than we are now, not saying that we are in danger with what we have, but with it being an updated product, we're in a far better state. The support supplied by Logicalis, let alone Cisco, is immense compared to our current product. Our current product is, it's a NetGate appliance. It's a generic piece of equipment with an open-source software, firewall software on top of it. So, it's only as good as the, the support's only as good as the open-source community is going to, going to give you. And the open-source thing of that is being free. That software is free, what you're paying for on top of that's the platform and the support. So, Logicalis with the grand total for, it's the hardware, the licensing for the software, maintenance on top of that, and then them to come down and program it correctly. Comes out to about, or right at $44,108.73. That is a five-year licensing, so we won't have to think about licensing for five years. The estimated portion for USAC is 27, 818, 24, where then USD 290 will owe 16, 290, 49.
So, our portion is a 16?
Correct. Yeah.
And will it be more user-friendly than the one you...
Absolutely. Absolutely. The interface is much easier to understand. It's one of those things, I could put it in front of somebody that even has a basic knowledge of networking and they would be able to muddle their way through. Logicalis, while for training, I will, my intention is to have John and Kendra go through that training, so if one of us is gone, the other can fill that need. Occasionally, there is times where we need to get in there and unblock things. It's not just our proxy that's blocking things, the filter, the firewall's also doing that. So, there's these two pieces of equipment that you're having to interface with and it helps that, you know, I'm not always here, John's not always here, Kendra's not always here, so it helps to have more than one person trained on that piece of equipment.
Great question. Anything else? Dr. Cox, before we vote, could you call Chief Warner and give him a ride home tonight in case he gets hit by a bus that we're not careful?
I'll take care of him.
Till we get this piece installed? Okay.
Yep.
All right. Very good. Just chucking. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all, I'm sorry, let's have a motion first.
I move we approve the bid from Logicalis for $44,108.73 with $27,818.24 covered under E-Rate and the other $16,290.49 coming from USD 290.
Second.
It moves seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
I think one of the things is Adam gets us back up to the, to the agenda here. We have been blessed in our district with having some really great tech directors from Andy initially, even back all the way to the days when, when Kim was our tech director, but to Andy, to Dean, which really transitioned our district into something different, back to Andy and now to Adam. Adam is really, really good. If you're not aware of how good Adam is, we are lucky to have Adam. We do not, we do not worry about technology in our district very often. Those guys take care of us every day. So, kudos to him. Certainly appreciate it.
Very good. Okay. 6.04, KSAB policy update. Dr. Cox.
I do not want to go through this whole thing and give you a rendition you guys can, can read, but I do want to give you a, a couple of things to, to consider. The executive session, as you read it, it appears that somebody videotaped an executive session at some point in time. What, what this does is identifies that it's now illegal and, you know, prosecuted by law should somebody choose to, to video an executive session. So, a couple of things. One, it should be noted that there are some executive sessions that should be videoed or should be recorded. If we are doing a student hearing, if there is an appeal to something, there is a requirement for us to, to record those sessions under the law. That is not what they're talking about. They're talking like executive session where we go in to have a conversation about personnel with our attorney, whatever it happens to be. The only way that I can see this happening is one of two things. One, either one of the board members actually videoed executive session and released information when they shouldn't have, or two, they have a situation in which executive session stays here and everybody has moved out of a boardroom and somebody left a, a recording device in the, in the room. One of those two things I'm going to assume happened, but essentially what they're saying now is that, under the law, can't occur and it's punishable through the law. So, that is what it is. The others are, are pretty minimal. For instance, the, the graduation requirements would, would indicate that you can maneuver within the graduation requirements... The proposal on AI, we're actually meeting with admin tomorrow to discuss what this means, what it would look like, how we want to address it. And we'll see if that's the AI policy we want to utilize. But you can start to review that. We'll have some conversations as we move forward.
Is that just for students or for staff?
It encompasses both. It's use across the district. The next one, the IKBA controversial issues. The next ones are all going to kind of be hosted under the same qualifiers. So this policy further identifies that teachers should not engage in conversations of controversial topics with students and provide their own opinions, right? This is true. The caveat to that is that there are state standards that would indicate that within the classroom, ELA is a perfect example of them, that it is our responsibility to teach social discourse as it currently exists, right? So it is the responsibility of schools to have discussions about current social issues per the guidelines of our standards in the state. However, what this policy is indicating is that should that occur, teacher is the facilitator, not a provider of personal opinion. So they work through some of those things. You can see IKCA removes this notion of AIDS. I actually think when you look at when this policy was originally developed in 2004, this is a time when people were very fearful of AIDS, what was going to happen with AIDS. And so it became a portion of a lot of policies, specifically about health of students in our schools. In today's world, AIDS is not the same outcome that it once was. And so subsequently, they're removing it from there as certainly there are a number of people with HIV and AIDS that continue to operate in a normal capacity every day. And so some of those things are being removed from the conversation. You then have a form that's associated with that. IKD is probably the one that is most interesting at this point. So what this policy indicates, and it falls under Mahmoud and Taylor, is that schools have to provide an opt-out policy for religious exemption in all aspects of their curriculum. If they don't, which is what happened in this particular court case, then the school is liable for whatever jurisdiction the courts put on them in terms of how it impacted somebody's life. The issue that this is going to create is not one of the opportunity to opt out, but one of ensuring that the resources that we use are consistent and not intertwined, right? So what the court case really states, and I'll continue to research to make sure that I'm completely right on this, is that it is a teacher's responsibility to provide an opt-out opportunity for parents. But it is not specific to any religious fact, right? So it is not, since it's talking about LGBTQ and inclusive storybooks, it is not to say, hey, we're going to read a book that has this ideology in it. You have the opportunity to opt out. What teachers should be saying and what districts should be saying is that here are our resources. If you have a religious exemption, you can review all of our resources. Here's your opt-out form, let us have it. It is not to say, hey, this thing might pop up in this book. You might want to be aware of it. That is not what the policy states. So what it does mean for us is that we better be clear on what resources we are using. And we need to provide those to our public, make sure that they have access to it, and we not need to be pulling something in without district approval. This is where, we have worked really hard on creating guidelines for district resources. It is not because we wanted to be controlling of what teachers have access to. It's because these things have been coming, and it's about protection of our staff and our district. So we want to make sure that they are not putting themselves in a situation in which litigation is coming because all of a sudden we put in a resource that wasn't approved, and we didn't have parents given the opportunity to opt out of that resource for religious exemption and ultimately have some issue down the road. So we'll continue to monitor this. This works all directions. So understand that, as an example, it is winter time, right? So one of the things that might be read to classes on the next two weeks would be The Polar Express. There are distinct religious implications to The Polar Express. If you've read the book, you should know what I'm talking about. The opt-out works that way as well. So if we're just reading The Polar Express, there are religious implications. If somebody does not want their kid to be presented with Christmas endeavors, they have the opportunity to opt out, which means that if we just pull that book off the shelf and we start reading it, we didn't give our kids the opportunity to opt out.
So as a teacher, I have to have every read aloud approved, every children's literature?
You see where this policy is going. It is going to be extremely difficult to govern this in the world of education. So.
So how do parents know? Like you said.
Have a list ahead of it.
You have a list, and they have the opportunity to go review it.
So we currently don't do that. We would be doing that with this.
We have most of our resources available to our.
Right, I think the thing that Dr. Cobb and I are talking about, that this concerns is exactly what Deirdre said. There are a lot of read alouts. Like you may go to the library, a teacher may go to the library and check out because you're talking about a certain topic. And let's say within, because there are text sets. In elementary school, there are lots of text sets. We don't have all those listed on our curriculum maps, but we may have to go to that point where we do have all of those listed on our curriculum maps. The amount of resources that are in an elementary school are a lot and that teachers have access to that can pull because it is good to be able to read various books on a same topic. So those are called text sets.
Or just for fun.
Or just for fun.
Just to read alouds that you read for fun. I read Summer of the Monkeys for years and years and years. So I would have to put that.
Well, that would be okay. But think about that, Deirdre. You read that for years and years and years. So you'd be able to put that in the curriculum map because you're like, I know I'm going to read this.
Right, but everything.
But what if you, like a week ahead, right, are you're thinking, hey, we haven't read a story on Thanksgiving. Let's get a Thanksgiving book. And, you know, I think that's where we have to figure out, what's the way to manage this so that we can keep our teachers safe? We can make sure, safe, I mean, by not getting themselves into trouble, but also being transparent for our families.
Does that have to do with, like, the other day I went and read to, like, the pre-K at the high school?
Yep.
As a mystery reader, and I brought my own book.
Yes.
Yeah, me too.
You brought outside unapproved curriculum?
It's about tea.
Yeah, so this is, there are a lot of implications to this that we need to consider. There's not a lot of wiggle room as the Supreme Court has already made their decision. So we'll have to work within that construct. But it will be a difficult road to navigate. The others you can kind of read about, and then we'll go from there. But I did want to identify those deals. We will not approve or recommend any of those policies for approval until the January meeting. But if there are any questions, you guys now have them in front of you, and you can.
Would you put her book on the approval list for January?
I will, I'll make sure that we get it on there.
You know, by golly, all right.
And again, I think that the important thing to recognize there is that it's solely for religious exemptions, right? So there are opt-out policies for other things. It's solely for religious exemption. In that policy, it would indicate that the principles are the determinant of whether or not it's a religious exemption or it's not. So again, the onus of responsibility becomes great. So you can say, hey, I have a religious exemption. One of the things you might have to show is that you actually are affiliated with a particular type of religion, right? And then so it's provided. Once it's approved, you have the opt-out for that process for an entire year, right? At least this is my understanding of the policy so far. We'll continue to research and ask a lot of questions of a legal team. But what it doesn't mean is that every single book, if I know that Chris has, that every time we read something, I say, Chris, just so you know, we're doing this. Do you want to opt out or do you not want to opt out? It's the parent's responsibility to fill out the opt-out form. It's our responsibility to give them access to the resources, right? So it is not a, hey, parents, we're reading this book with this kind of construct. Are you interested? That they would tell you within the policy that that is not its intent, nor should we identify particular things that might create controversy. That the issue is, hey, here's the resource we're going to read. There's a religious exemption form. If you'd like to exempt yourself, here's the process.
So there's forty-two pages of this. I'll skim through it, but you'll bring up things that are controversial or.
Yep, yes.
Are these policies finalized on KSAB's side?
These are all the recommendations from KSAB, yep.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Number six, board handbook.
Actually, we're going to go to six oh five, which is the ORC board position.
Well, how about that? Why don't we do that, too?
So we have an open board seat on the ORC board due to the resignation of Matt Skirman, who's been on that board, I think, for six years now. He's been there for quite some time. I think he's just ready for a change. We asked our staff if they were interested. We had three people that were interested in the position. Two of them were disqualified based upon where they lived outside of the city limits. And so the one person that had an interest and met all the criterion was Taylor Nice Wonder, who currently works at Garfield as a title teacher. She's an amazing lady and certainly interested in doing this and giving back to our community a little bit. Meets all the other criterion. So if it behooves the board, that would be my recommendation to appoint Taylor Nice Wonder as the ORC board representative.
Comments or motion, second?
I move we approve Taylor Nice Wonder as the USD two ninety appointed ORC board representative.
Bid moves, and second, and that we approve Taylor to the ORC. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. Now, on to six point oh six, board handbook.
Yeah, so I put the board handbook on here simply because after we went through the election process, I realized that when Mimi came on, and I think when Deirdre came on, we didn't really have any conversations about boardsmanship, what it looked like, expectations of the board. And so I went back and looked at the board handbook. It had been, I think, revised in twenty-one, twenty-two. For the most part, I think that the information that is in that handbook is still relevant to today. I did make a couple of adjustments, not just the dates, but also the fact that we now meet once a month versus twice a month. And then the deadlines for budgetary processes, they've changed within the law. So as you may remember, prior to revenue neutrality and all of those things, the budget was done in August. You had to meet certain guidelines in July. Those things have all been pushed back now, so we outlined that. But other than that, I wanted you to have the handbook in front of you to be able to read through and take a look and see if it still met the expectations of this board. I'm not sure that we need to sit down and do a lot of discussion with it tonight. I just wanted to put it in front of you so you had access to it, and we can talk about it in January if there are changes that need to be made to that. Or you can present them to me over the course of the next month before our next board meeting, and we can adjust and then bring it back to the board for full approval. But there's not really a lot to discuss. I think at this point, it's more about the opportunity for you to review and evaluate as to whether or not that document still meets our needs as a guiding document for the board.
Excellent. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. Okay. Are we waiting for?
No, we've texted her and let her know that we'll push her back till January.
Very good. Moving right on, seven point oh one, approved personnel report.
See, I was trying to open it to check in. We think it's a proposal issue, so I emailed it to all of you. So it's working fine on my, on my. Your proposal's moving it by the way.
I move that we approve the personnel report.
Nice, well done. Bid moves, second, we approve the personnel report. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Announcements?
Yeah, we have started winter sports. Some great opportunities for our kids moving forward. Nine days to winter break. What, seven days until finals at the high school? So here we are at the end of the first semester already. It seems like it goes very fast. But lots of really great things going on throughout the district. I see a lot of you in a lot of different spaces being a part of that. And so we appreciate that. We certainly appreciate Mrs. Allen and Mr. Serna coming by today with our kids from OLC. I think it warms my heart to see the impact that our kids at OLC are having upon our community as well as the impact that that program is having on our kids. And some kids that may not otherwise find their level of success and doing amazing things there. So we appreciate all that they do. Certainly appreciate Kristen and Joe and the work that they do within that program, Lucinda as well. So I think that's all we got, and we'll head on out of here.
Okay. Section nine, adjournment. Bid moves, second, and we adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. It's cold outside. Thank you, everybody. It's cold outside.